The council are present with the exception of Councilman Billsbuck. Also, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted in the meeting room that is accessible to the public during the course of this meeting. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. The Consent Agenda is as follows. Item A: Approve Agenda As Submitted. Item B: Receive and Place On File All Notices Pertaining To This Meeting. Item C: Receive and Place On File All Materials Having Any Bearing On This Meeting. Item D: Approval Of Minutes Of Regular Meeting On December 1st, 2014, As On File In The City Clerk's Office. Item E: Approval Of Treasurers Report Of Claims. E1: Approval Of Claim Of Main Street Beatrice In The Amount Of $433.91. E2: Approval Of Claim Of Clayball Pharmacy In The Amount Of $225. E3: Approval Of The Balance Of The Treasurers Report Of Claims In The Amount Of $302,194.52. Item F: Approval Of Boswa Claims. Item F1: Approval Of Boswa Claim Of Clayball Pharmacy In The Amount Of $50. F2: Approval Of Balance Of Boswa Report Of Claims In The Amount Of $21,068.83. Item G: Write Off Of Balance Of The Ambulance Of...I beg your pardon. Item G: Write Off Of Ambulance Bad Debts. Item H: Resolution Number 5710 Appointing Jason Moore To Fill The Position Of City Certified Street Superintendent With The Nebraska Department Of Roads. That's actually the certified city street superintendent with the Nebraska Department Of Roads. Item I: Resolution Number 5711 Approving Amendment Number Two To The City Of Beatrice Board Of Public Works Flexible Benefit Plan. Item J: Resolution Number 5712 Entering Into A Lease Purchase Agreement With John Deere Financial For A 2013 John Deere Skid Loader For The Street Department. And Item K: Approval Of Manager Application For James E. Larson In Connection With Liquor License D-99222 For ShopCo Hometown Store At 123 North 24th Street.
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the Consent Agenda be approved, accepted, and eradified as presented. Councilman Clayball abstained from E1, E2, and F1.
Sir, a second?
Pull any off first?
Beg your pardon. Does any council member want to pull any item off? Ted?
Item J.
Item J for Ted.
He wanted the same one.
Same one. Anybody else? Anyone from the audience want any item removed? Just J.
I'll change that motion again. Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the Consent Agenda with the exception of item J be approved, accepted, and eradified as presented.
Sir, a second. Seconded by Kerr. Seconded by Clayball. Kerr, beg your pardon.
One over two.
Your votes, please. That is approved eight-zero. Mr. Fairbanks?
We're gonna make a motion for item J.
Okay. Just a minute. Sorry.
Mayor, I move that item J Resolution Number 5712 Entering Into A Lease Purchase Agreement With John Deere Financial For 2013 John Deere SkidSteer Loader For The Street Department be approved, accepted, and eradified as presented.
Seconded by Morgan. Discussion.
Now, it's me. I really only have one question. I guess it's kind of a layered question, but I don't have any problem with the lease agreement. I don't have any problem with the length or the cost of that. I just want to know if we're replacing a piece of equipment or if this is a different skid loader. I don't know if I missed that in here, but I didn't see it. And if we're not replacing it, what's this being used for that we needed it now that we didn't need it before?
Jason, come on up.
What's that? Was it trade-in? I missed that. Okay. Well, the lease thing is lengthy.
The skid loader we have is the one we've had for the last year. It is the same machine. What we had had in years past was we had had a 250-hour lease agreement on it. It was for a one-year, 250-hour lease. Since I've taken over, we have put more hours on the machine, and we anticipate putting more hours on the machine. It's always been a one-year lease, so we're starting the next year's lease up is what we're doing. What I looked at doing was since we will be putting more hours on the machine than what has previously been put on the machine in the last year, I'm looking to try and get the payoff. So it'll be, I believe it'll be a three, be a five-year, be a five-year payoff on the machine. It bumps the payments up a little bit. I still have the money in the account, the budgeted for it, but by bumping up the hours, more hours in a year's time, the actual, if we were to lease it, stay on a one-year lease, the payments would actually be more money than what we're, I'm coming to right now for the lease payment, for the one-year payment. So we go from about $3,500 is what we've been paying, I believe it is, for one year at 250 hours. The payments are gonna be about ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, thirty-four, thirty-one.
Ninety-seven, thirty-four. And if we were to jump up to 500 hours in one year, the payments would be more than that for the lease payment.
But you don't, you don't get any at the back end if you don't hit that 500 hours? I mean, you trade in or you lease?
Trade in or lease. What do you mean?
Well, I mean, at the end of your lease, if you don't hit that 500 hours, you don't, there's not a payback for that, right? If you go over the 250, you do. You pay. But if you don't, but you're under the other, you don't.
No.
Okay. Well, I've never leased a piece of equipment, so I...
And it just seemed, it just seemed that if we were gonna be using this machine, it's the same machine that we've had. It's been taken very good care of because it had low hours on it. It just seemed, it made more sense for us to have the piece of equipment. And I believe after five years, it will be ours.
Yeah. Okay. That was all I had.
Any other questions from anybody? Phil?
Just out of curiosity, since it is $48,000 over five years, did we go out for RFPs for this so other companies could possibly?
We didn't, though, because it was the same piece of equipment. We're just rolling the lease over.
Okay. I'm just wondering, would it have been prudent to go look at other companies to see if maybe there was a better lease out there? Seems like for $48,000, maybe we should look around.
That's extremely cheap. The Bobcat that I leased at the landfill was a lot more.
For that reason, I'm not gonna vote for this. I think it really should have been voted out, put out for bids to see what somebody might have done on a different lease with maybe Case or somebody else, and let them have a chance to bid on this if they would want to also.
The remaining, that's the remaining balance off of our first year. That's money that's already came off of it, though. Our first $3,500 has already came off of that total.
I see that.
So...
Dwight?
So is there a big benefit between leasing this and outright?
I think it depends on how many hours you're gonna put on it, what you plan on doing with the machine once you have it paid off. The more hours you put on the machine, the more money you're gonna pay.
Five years, we'll have zero investment anyway, right? If it's a lease, you don't...
Yeah. If it's a lease, you're just gonna keep turning it in. You're not gonna have, you're not gonna have anything on it.
Yes. They're just rolling over the lease.
Anybody else? Rich?
After five years, is this piece of equipment still gonna be able to service?
Oh, yes.
It does have a lifespan of over five?
Yes, and I've already been told that after five years, the hours, if we, if we were to stay right around the 400 hours, after five years, we'd have about 20, there's 250 hours on the machine right now, I believe. After five years, we may be in that 2,200 hours. I've already been told that if we would like to trade the machine back in, that the resale value on the machine, if we were to trade it back in, would be, we would still have a considerable amount of money to be able to roll towards another machine.
Okay.
John Deere's hold their value extremely well.
Yes, I know that.
Or you could buy that machine.
Or, it will be ours in five years.
For a dollar.
Yes, yes, yes. We can have that machine for $1.
Any other questions? Dwight?
Why don't we just budget to purchase it outright and save $3,000, $4,000?
Budget and purchase it outright?
It's something we can look at doing next year as we prepare the budget, but for this year's budget, he didn't have $48,000 budgeted to purchase this item. We could find an extra couple thousand dollars for the additional lease payment, but we find the additional payment for an outright purchase wasn't feasible this year.
And you inherited this, didn't you? You inherited this in your budget.
Yes, this was in the budget in February. $3,500 was, yes.
Yeah.
And we made some cost savings here or there that will allow for this payment to be made.
Any other questions of Jason? Thank you, Jason.
You bet.
Anybody in the audience have any questions regarding the purchase or the lease of the skid loader? If not, I'd ask for your vote, please. And that vote is seven-zero with Councilman Cook voting against. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 5713 Executing An Agreement And Related Documents With Engage For A Grant In The Amount Of $76,800 Derived From LB840 Funds To Be Used For The Payment Of Lease Payments For A Research And Development Facility Located At 2,000 Progressive Boulevard, Suite 200.
Mayor, I move the Resolution Number 5713 Be Passed And Adom.
Sir, a second. Seconded by Cook. Moved by Catlin. Seconded by Cook. Discussion. Mr. Morgan?
On both the resolutions, it is my understanding that a ruling has been made that I need to abstain from participation and the vote because of the service that I provide for the City Council to the Engage Board as a voting member.
Okay. So noted. Members of the CARC, I'm gonna give you a recommendation, Mr. Doyle. You wanna come up?
Stand. After he's done, I have a motion I'd like to make on this.
Okay. Well, let's let the presentation start.
Hi, Mayor.
Mr. Doyle?
I really wasn't planning on making a presentation here other than they just asked me to come in case you guys had questions. That's what I'm doing here. Hi, Linda. We did look at it. We do hopefully what you guys pay us to do at that board meeting. We look at the finances. We look at the number of jobs. We look at what are the chances of this thing actually making it. We go through the business plan. I mean, the things that you guys do, we try to do in addition to what you do and see if it's reasonable. All right? And we did all those things, and I can't speak for all the board members. I believe everybody that was there did. I know I did. Went out and actually went through the facility, and I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I understood everything that was told me in that facility because I'm not a chemist or a rare earth material specialist by any shakes, but I did get the answers to the questions I asked. I had like 30, 35 different questions I had before I went out there, and I either got them there answered, or I got them answered by Tobias or Mr. Cruz at the board meeting. So I at least believe that the board got the concept. All right? And that's about all that I think that we could get from that, going through that facility. It seemed like we're getting jobs pretty quickly here, like eight jobs in seven months if they're able to do what they say they're going to do. I think we would recommend that you get some kind of substantiation to this criterion on that they're gonna raise $6 million before they really do anything else. That's a pretty big number, but I believe Mr. Cruz, if mine notes are right, said that they've raised somewhere around $3 million. We didn't ask him to reduce any documents for that. There's a lot of people there that maybe would or would not like to have their name out in the public for whatever reason, but I've learned to take people's word for these things over the last 25 or 30 years unless they knifed me in the back for some reason. So we got answers to all of our questions. I think we did as good a due diligence as we can do on this kind of thing. So I just believe it comes down to whether you guys believe, has this got a chance? I mean, does it have a decent chance? Is it a building that's not really bringing in any revenue or doing a lot for us right now? They're putting a pretty good chunk of their own money in it, if these figures are correct. And this is just a way of trying to meld the two ends together and hopefully get this into something that is going to grow. I will tell you just an aside from a personal standpoint that we, my office has quite a few clients, and in the areas around here, without going into a lot more detail than that, a number of my clients are having all their mineral rights paid for for these very materials that we were shown and talked through during this meetings that we had and through the survey that we went through. So I know it's happening out there because they're bringing money into my office to invest. So I know that there's more than this company interested in what's going on here, and there must be some viability to it, at least they believe it is, going forward here. So I guess I'm here to try to answer any questions that you guys might have from our committee's standpoint.
As I read through this, there are four employees there now, right?
Just one sec here, I'll tell you. Somebody here would probably be better to answer that question than me, but...
Glennis? There's four employees out there right now?
Ten at the lab. They have six.
They have six out, yeah. Six, and then they're planning on four, and then four.
Eight plus the six that they've got out there now.
Do the members of the Engage Board that are here, would you like to come forward also and join Terry? I think Terry would appreciate that.
Terry, looking over their business plan, did it seem solid and substantial in your professional opinion?
It seemed reasonable.
Okay.
Normally, when we have these, you know, this, normally when these companies come before us, they normally don't have their finances 100 percent perfect, you know, that otherwise they wouldn't be coming, wasting our time or asking for money and going through this public kind of stuff. But it seemed reasonable to us, yes. A big number there is to raise $6 million. I mean, that's a big deal on this thing, so...
I'd like to recognize Andrea Schaefer, President of the Engage Board, and Glennis McClure, Director of Engage.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending.
You guys have a whole presentation, right?
Well, we have, we have some slides that we've prepared, and actually, I do have copies of those that I'd be glad to hand to each of you, so...
Terry, did you have very much discussion then from the other CARC members? Was there very much discussion from other?
They went and looked at it, but, and I think, they were in, we were in different groups because of laws, you know, whatever, so my presentation I had with them was at the board meeting, okay? Because we weren't in the same groups that actually took the tours. But I don't think they had anything different, Rick. They didn't bring anything up different that we didn't get answered that I know of.
I think in this, in this particular instance, I think everybody on the council was able to go out and visit, weren't they? Yeah, which is...
You guys know more than I do about this slide.
No, we're like you. We get understanding.
Well, it's a very interesting project, but there's a lot of Greek here, too. I mean, there just is. Be real truthful with you.
As far as the application goes, Engage was asked to bring this forward, or, you know, as we looked at the situation, I mean, it looked like it could be a fit for us to bring this forward. So our board spent time with Mr. Cruz, and also our executive committee spent time, I would say probably at least, I've met with him several times over the last couple of months, actually. I would say two or three hours at least just going through, you know, what the business is, what the numbers mean, some of those kinds of things. So in your packets, you do have a presentation. It's Rare Earths, corporate presentation that was included in your packet, and I wanted to maybe focus on that first. Rare Earths is a business that works with extraction and separation of rare earth elements. And I'm not gonna go through each slide, but I wanted to just bring your attention to that piece and ask if in particular you have any questions about the business concept, what rare earths do. I think it's important for, I guess, the community to understand that rare earths are used in a lot of high technology these days. And so, and I understand that the demand just continues to grow with those kinds of things. I think it's on the fourth slide in the packet, why rare earths are important. You can see catalytic converters, TV monitors, smartphones. I mean, it just goes on and on as far as the technology that has happened here. And, you know, I think it's been an interesting process. I've learned a lot about rare earths. I never thought I ever would, but I understand that the technology, the way it is, and China really has had a corner on that market, and they, they have an old technology that they use, and it's not environmentally friendly. So I think it's quite a, sort of an honor, if you will, that we have, a company that has selected Beatrice to come and do their research, and they've been doing the research, and they're ready really for the next step. And the research has to do with more of a green technology, and that's kind of, kind of happened by default, I guess, in that the way they have, you know, worked with their processing, it's kind of a loop technology so that they are not emptying acids into our soils, and they're not, they're not destroying, you know, our, you know, our place here. Whereas in, well, I guess in China, they probably in some cases don't care about that. And so, so really what they're doing, I think, with their research is they're bringing this technology to be able to extract rare earths in a clean fashion. So, and some of that's talked about in this, in this presentation that you have in front of you. The ores, the tailings, if you will, will come from all over the world. They've worked on a deal at least here lately. They've had a joint agreement with a mining company in Brazil, and that mining company, they mine for phosphates. And you know how agriculture is in Brazil. They need to have the fertilizers to put back onto the field, and phosphate's one of those that, that's used for that. And so the tailings from that, those mines will come back here to be further processed down for the rare earths extraction. And, you know, again, I want to say I appreciate all of you taking time to come out because, to the, to the lab to, to visit with the chemist there and learn more about this firsthand because, I mean, it's really made a huge difference for me, and I've been out there, I think, with each of you, and every time I've learned, I've learned more. But I also want to say that, again, with all the visits that I've had with Alan and, with Mr. Cruz and the chemist, the message always is very consistent. So from that point of view, I think that helps build trust. I mean, there's really, this is a complicated story, and I've heard the, I've heard the details, you know, multiple times, and, you know, like I say, I always learn something more. You guys have asked great questions out there, and so that's good. So as far as this presentation, through what the company is about, are there any particular slides or questions that you have of any of that that I would like to go through with you if I will? A few slides or some comments on how we're looking at the project? Okay. And there's a timeline in there, and I guess I should point out to you, that's the second to the last slide. They've got this, you know, laid out. We are, they've been working on, you know, capital raise, as Terry mentioned. We're looking at a, they're looking at a six, an additional $6 million raise to help go to the pilot plant phase, and at the same time, they'll be hiring the employees along with that. The definitive study, feasibility study, will be a part of the pilot phase, and that study, the DFS, that's noted there, will help them in determining how to really take that next step with commercialization. But also what it does when you do those studies, that helps them raise the additional funds that they need, because they're gonna need more funds to go to commercialization. So if they're, they're testing as they go along, they've got, you know, a third party helping them with the study, then that can be useful to raise more capital. That, again, one of our, so I guess our, sort of our positive notions in all this is that there's capital coming into the community. We've already had, you know, they've already raised some money. They've got six more million planned with, you know, with, that's their, that's their minimum target, if I understand that right. And then, you know, there's more to come later, so. And that's what the definitive feasibility study will do, and so on. And so you can see sort of that timeline there of their plans. Yes?
Terry said that they've got two to three million now, and they're looking for an additional...
Additional six million.
Six million, which would put it up to nine million.
For the pilot phase, yeah.
For the pilot phase.
Yep. And the three million's already been helping them do what they've been doing. Obviously, they've had to pay people and be doing research, and that's what, you know, that's been, being utilized now. Okay?
A sec here.
Alan, of the, I'm not sure if I understood it that way. Of the six million, have you raised any of that to date?
About two of the six.
Then it's not gonna be nine million. It's gonna be six million total.
We have a minimum of six to start the project with a goal of nine, which would then all the equity capital raised since the start of inception of the company would be a full.
But as far as the application, we're only, they only have to fulfill the six million, not the nine.
Right. Right. Because that'll get them to the point of...
Commercialization.
No, the pilot phase, the pilot phase.
And after the pilot phase comes commercialization. So if that gets them through the pilot phase, the next phase would be the commercial, then they'd have to raise more funds for that.
Right, right. And that's where the definitive feasibility study comes into play, okay? So that they can go and find those investors that, you know, will say, this is what's happening, this is, you know, this is working, therefore it makes sense then to invest, you know, for investors to invest further, okay? So, and in the pilot phase as well, there's additional aid employees, as noted in your project jobs notations here. Okay? So, all right. So is it all right? Should I go ahead and go through our...
Absolutely.
Okay? All right. Well, again, Engage is our, our role, and, you know, again, we're, as you know, we are, you're still a new organization, and this is sort of first time for this, but, you know, again, we put our heads together and looked at this, and we, you know, again, we are job creation and, you know, for economic development purposes here, looking at the opportunities that are presented to us. I've dug a little bit more into 840, and LB840, you can provide grants for businesses that create jobs and attract new capital investments, and, you know, we're saying that this, this project will do that. LB840 also states that priorities should be given to projects that create or retain jobs that are at or above wage, average wage and benefits. And I've looked at the figures, you know, here, and I've seen two different things, I guess, 39,000 from the Department of Labor. Some recent information I got from them was sort of an average wage, you know, here in this area. And again, if you look at the numbers, as noted over in the project jobs section there, we're looking at a $46,000 to $50,000 average wage, and these are, these are at minimum. Not sure they can get an electrical engineer for $60,000, but that's a minimum figure, okay? So that, this shows that, I think, that that average wage of those jobs will be above what our, what our areas is doing right now. And I want to say that our Engage Board also considered this, and we, we understand there's risks anytime you're working with a new business, and, you know, it's whether you loan money to an ongoing business, and that's happened before. There are risks involved with that. But we also looked at the rewards of the situation, and, and, you know, I think that's, that's an important thing to consider here. So you're looking at your, you know, sort of phase one or the request of project rent that's already been talked about, but again, the, we believe that this request and what's happening there and the build-out there is fitting the intent, the original intent of that building, and that was to bring high-tech, high-wage jobs and also some connection to Southeast Community College. I know one day that I was out there, I guess when Bob happened to be there, there was conversation about how they might relate and work with the college, and I know that the chemist there had a very positive outlook and feel about that. And so, you know, there's good cooperation potentially for, and I know one of the chemists said, I really like, I really look forward to the opportunity of helping students understand what they can do with chemistry for real, not just, you know, academically, but, you know, how do you put chemistry to use? And they are doing that here in Beatrice, so. Then project jobs. There's, you know, phase one, phase two, phase three, and I apologize for all the different phases that are thrown out, but this phase has to do with the pilot plant phase, and it is, you know, again, adding those jobs as noted in your, in your packet. And I've already talked about the definitive feasibility study and the more capital that would be raised from that. But this amount of money will help them with speed to market. If you can imagine, they've been working on research, they've been developing, you know, as they've been going along, and, you know, they're in the middle of this, continuing to try to raise money, but, you know, what, I guess what I would say is, is that if this community, if this fund can go forward for, for this project, you know, it just helps with, you know, speeding things along a bit. And I know, I think these were, the overall project benefits were included in your packet before, so I really won't, you know, dwell on those anymore for you, but I guess there are... are local vendors that are working on the facility improvements, there's increased local spending when we have jobs involved, buying and renting of houses, the general cost of living, that type of thing. And I would like to mention at this time, and this is on a, you know, a later slide, but I talked with one of our economic development partners to find out what is the return on investment with a job, maybe a $50,000 level job, which is roughly, you know, the, the amount that they're looking at here. And Nebraska Public Power District, the economist, got back to me and said, they use a program called M-Plan, and they calculate the, the outputs. So when we have people living in this community making so much, you know, per, you know, per their salary, what does that return to the, to the community? And I found it pretty interesting that a $50,000 job provides an annual local impact of $33,600. That includes their rent, their groceries, medical, the things that they spend in this community, or hope, we hope, we hope at least that they're spending and living here, okay? So if you take 16 jobs, or whatever you want to, you know, do there, that's $537,000 annually. So with this total request of 326,8, you know, in one year's time, the return to the, and these are new jobs, new folks coming into the community, living, spending, you've got, you've got your return on investment right there. So one way to look at it. And I guess one of the bullets there, community shows support to a new business in industries, industry here. And I guess I'd like to ask you, how often do we get this kind of opportunity? How often does it happen? And it's, and it's, it's rare. Along those lines, I just want to mention too, there's a community venture network that I'm familiar with, I have not attended, it happens at least three or four times a year in Minneapolis. And that's where economic developers, to listen to, to companies that have an interest in, well, they, they're at this development stage, they're interested in, you know, growing to the next level. And what, what they ask people to come in to do there is to listen to their pitch, and they're looking for a place. Generally, they're looking for a Midwestern place, because this is Minneapolis, I don't know if it happens, I'm sure it happens on the coast, but this is a Midwestern effort. And so they, they listen to the pitch, they ask for a place, you know, do you have a place or facility for us to come do business here? And they're, they're also generally asking for money. What kind of assistance can you provide? And it's my understanding that a couple of our, you know, my economic development colleagues in the Southeast Nebraska area have really embraced this. And one community in particular has apparently come in, in second place, two or three times on, on those deals. And that economic developer told me that they're trying to get to a point where they're raising more money so they can actually bring more of these kinds of companies in. I would call that progress, and I, I would call it looking for those opportunities. And again, I think this opportunity is in front of us, so, okay? And I've already mentioned the M-Plan, went through that, those numbers with you. So, I guess to sort of summarize, here's why we, you know, as far as Engage is bringing this forward, and why we believe project rent and project job requests should be fulfilled. The Beatrice Business Campus Building will be improved and fully utilized, and it's been a long time coming, I guess, for that. We believe that opportunity is now for rare earth salts to move into their pilot phase and to add additional higher-wage workers here. The company will be looking at raising additional capital, again, that's capital, or that's investment coming into the community. They're working for commercialization, it's been mentioned several times, and when we get to that point by roughly 2017, we're looking at a total approximately of 100 jobs. And, you know, think about this, we're really bringing sort of a new industry here, we could be bringing a new industry here with this whole thing, and that there's potential spinoffs that we're not really even sure of. But I understand that this company has considered, you know, well, there, there are other companies that make products, you know, from the rare earths, and, you know, you never know if we could attract one of those companies here if the rare earth is right here. And also, again, this is an internationally recognized market, so. With that, thank you.
Questions, please? Mr. Kerr?
Glennis, okay. We don't have the money in the GCD funds to cover this, so this is why we're going through the LB840 funds, correct?
The GCD funds.
CDPG.
I hate those names.
Yeah, that's my understanding. I mean, and that, again, CDPG is generally all about jobs too, so I guess if there was that level of funds there, we could potentially look at, at that as a, as a resource.
Now, this is the first time that we'll be actually using the LB840 funds in this, in this, this type of, most of the time it's been brick and mortar and infrastructure and such?
I don't believe, I, you know, and again, I just came on board when you were making a loan to Homestead Auto, I think that was for working capital.
That was done out of CBG.
Okay. So then, I don't know, Tobias, has this been used...
We've never used LB840 funds in this, in this manner before, have we?
No, in the past LB840 funds have been used either to purchase real estate or for infrastructure.
Infrastructure. And our, our, our other funds are drained down below $100,000, correct?
Our CBG, that's pretty close to what our current balance is in those funds.
I guess the thing that has bothered me the most on this was, where does Mike Ayers fall in this thing? He owns the business.
He owns the building.
He owns the building. Why did he put in the first application for this?
I, you know, I can't answer that. I mean, he was, I guess, trying to develop the building, so that's an asset to the community, but...
Okay. Then after that fell through, or didn't go through for whatever reason, why didn't the, why didn't the rare earth salts put the application in? Why did this go through Engage? This is another deviation from the norm. Why didn't those four gentlemen come forth and put the application in, and, and put it in themselves instead of running this through Engage?
Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Kerr, it's my understanding in working with Tobias and your city attorney that this was the best avenue for the project to fit within the guidelines of LB840, based on the structure that they currently have in place, and so we followed their recommendation and brought forward the recommendation to bring it through Engage.
Any other questions?
Rich, that, none of those other things that you talked about ever got as far as my committee, so I can't shed any light on that either, because I don't really know.
I'm just, I'm just looking back, you know, we have funded over the years, we've funded many, many projects. A lot of them we've been left holding the bag on, and, but for some reason, they always came forward to us, the companies did, and they didn't, this, this just bothers me that Engage had to bring this forward, and why these four gentlemen could not come forward with the application themselves. And I don't know the reasoning why they didn't. Maybe it's the investors or something didn't want their names brought out, like you explained before, Terry, but, and then another thing, when this was first brought to me, we were talking $76,000. And that's what I understood it was, I understood it was going to be Gage County Economic Development Fund. And then all of a sudden, I get this last Friday, and there's another $250,000 on the back end of it, for the phases, that just kind of hit me in the face all at once. So we went from $76,000 to $326,000. And this is not a loan, it's a forgivable loan on two sections of it, and it is a grant on the other one. So if, and heaven forbid if we put this through, I want to see it go big time. But if it doesn't, how do we, how do we, how do we get that money back? We don't. Even if they sell the business, we don't get it back, because all their, you know, the guy could, who's going to buy a business that's got that type of liability on?
Say that again, I guess I'm not following you. Who's going to buy a business that has that type of liability?
From the way I read this, Andrea, the only way that we could get any portion of our money back is if they, they, they sell the business. Is that correct?
Or if they move out of Gage County within a 10-year period, that's correct.
That's correct. So...
The part that I wasn't understanding is who would buy this business with that type of liability? What liability are you speaking to?
Well, if they buy the business, don't the liability follow the, wouldn't they take on the debt?
This is a grant.
It's a grant, yeah.
That's my point.
Again, LB840, I just want to, you know...
That's my point. It's a gift.
The grant is, is an eligible activity, you know, as is, we earlier questioned our working capital, that's an eligible activity for, that is okay under LB840, because, you know, you are the citizens of the community voted to take this forward, and so those are, again, eligible.
You know, I can point to five, six different businesses where we have lost money. Two months ago, we lost between 500 and 600,000 dollars. I'm a little gun shy. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little gun shy on this stuff right now. We have $1.1 million, I believe, at the last, on, on our, on our LB840 funds. If we take out $376,000, that's taking a third of our money back.
But it does start to regenerate itself January 1st, Rich.
I understand that, but it takes two years, it will take us two years to replace that money.
Does it take two years?
Yes.
$250,000 a year. It'll take two, well, 18 months we'll do it, but it'll take two years before the money's back in the fund. And from what I understand on the street here and other things, we've got another one coming down the line, application very shortly for another $300,000.
That's good news, Mr. Kerr.
I'm not sure about that. I just, guys, I'm a little gun shy on this thing. With the money that we've lost over the years, I'm just a little gun shy. I, I'm sorry, but...
Other members of the council, let me ask you guys this question. You have put forth a directive to the members of Engage, who are all volunteers, with the exception of Glennis, to work on economic development for Gage County. And our job is to look through the information that's provided to us by prospects, do the due diligence, work through the numbers, meet with the prospects, put together what we think would be a good package, and bring it forward through the steps that you have provided, which would be the CARC and now the city council. I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Kerr, in regards to being gun shy, but we are doing the job that the city council has asked us to do, and we have an opportunity in front of us to bring high-wage jobs to Gage County. This is a project that we have been waiting for, you guys. This isn't something that is, has been considered in the past. This is a much different type of project, these are much higher wages, and this is a really exciting project. I understand where you're coming from, but if you decide to take a pass tonight, I can't guarantee we're going to have another project like this in a month, or even in a year, or two years. So, that's, I guess that's where I see where we're at today.
But I heard that...
We need to take the chance on a company that's going to bring jobs like that to Gage County.
But I heard the same thing on market knowledge, is that was, knowledge marketing, whatever it was. Heard the same thing on Blue Valley Automotive, heard the same thing on whatever those pills were here a few years ago that we...
Peak Nutrition.
There you go, Peak Nutrition. I've, I've, I've heard this time and time again. And I'm not saying this isn't, isn't feasible, I'm just saying we lost a lot of money over the years on this thing, and...
I think this project that we're talking about today is, is present, it's, it's one that's on the table today. Let's don't go back in history, let's don't talk about a building that is out there that has some, maybe some negative connotations. Let's press forward, let's, let's take a look at this and, and see whether or not this passes the muster.
I think we need to look at each individual deal here. I, I understand that those of you that have been on a council for a long time are a little gun shy, but I think the easy thing for this council to do would say no. It's, it's hard to go ahead and say, yeah, we, we want this to go through.
I've said yes many times.
I know, I know, Rich.
I've said yes many times, and it's, it's bit me.
Well, we're going to move on to someone else. Rick, do you have anything?
That's fine, that's fine.
Well, I, I had just a question about utilities. I remember talking to Alan Cruz about a month ago or something like that, asking him about utilities, once you get up in your commercialization phase, that it was, I don't remember the number, but it was a high number of electricity that you were going to be using. How much?
A lot of electricity.
A lot of electricity. And, and hopefully, hopefully that means money for the city too, so hopefully we can get some of this back from electricity that they're going to be using, a large sum.
Ted, I'm sorry, you finished, Rick?
When we talked about the return on, you know, that was just for those, the living returns, I guess, the cost of living for families or whatever, that did not even include what the business would be spending, so.
Ted?
Well, it's, we've kind of lumped this all together, and I, we're talking about, we need to be talking about the A section of this resolution, I actually have a, I actually have something I, I want to discuss about that specifically, but, so, but we've kind of out it all together, and that's, that's fine, but I want to disagree a, a little bit. It's not any more difficult to say yes than it is to say no to these type of projects. And it isn't a matter of being gun shy or being anything like that, it's more of a, a matter of there being a learning curve. And, and I can appreciate your comment, Rick, and I can appreciate your comment too, Rick. It, Rich, I'm sorry, it's, because of, because every time you have a success, or every time you have a failure, you take something from that experience. And, and I think I've done that, with the, with the businesses that Rich brought up, because I was involved in all of them. And I, I was quiet on some of them, I was more vocal on some of them, but I brought up the same questions on all of them. And for individual, and each, and each individual business opportunity that we were proposed with, the same thing was brought to me, you know, you, this is what's going to occur, yes, there's a risk, it's all of that, and, and I understand that with this too. But it, it's just, but that's, but I really, the only thing I wanted to answer was, it's just as easy to say yes it is to say no. But as I tried, as I explained vehemently to Glennis over the weekend, and Mr. Cruz over the weekend, it's not them that get the phone calls, it isn't them that's held responsible in the public, it's not, it's, when I, when I, I called and talked to Terry about this, because he has information here, but it isn't, it, and I, I made several phone calls, I made several contacts, and talked to a lot of different people about it, tried to do my due diligence, and as I do on all of them, but probably more so on this, I spent, you know, as much time as I possibly could, but we, it's an opportunity, but it's a risk. So, you know, everybody has to make their own decisions based on, on their backgrounds, based on the information that they gathered on this project. But, but yeah, it's, it's just as easy to say yes it is to say no. I mean, there isn't, you can't say, well, because I've been, you know, jaded in the past, you, you know, it's just as easy to say yes as it is to say no.
Okay. Any other questions? What about from the audience? Anyone from the audience?
Pat Reddigan, Vice President of Engage, appreciate the opportunity to be able to bring this forward for your review, and hopefully your approval tonight. And Rich, you know, you talk about other companies, look at the number of successes that have happened in the past. Look at the industrial park, there are still a number of companies out there that have been there for a number of years. Someone at one point or another had enough faith in those companies to help them to get the financing that they needed to build their companies and grow, and now many of those companies employ people. There's absolutely no 100% guarantee that any business is going to succeed. You can take a business that's 200 years old, they can fail. You can take a business that's five years old, they can fail. Engage has been charged with the responsibility, and it's a large one, and we take it seriously. I can't tell you how many times during our board meetings that we discuss taxpayer money, that's where this is coming from. This is coming from everybody's hard-earned money. So, we take that charge very seriously. When this particular opportunity presented itself to us, it got, it, it got a tremendous amount of scrutiny. There were a number of conversations, a lot of questions, and good answers. So, there has to be a certain amount of faith that you put into our board to bring this forward to you for your approval. There has to be a certain amount of faith that you put into the CARC board to bring this forward for your approval. We don't take it lightly. We do take it seriously. We know that there have been failures in the past, but this is a fantastic opportunity, this is a big opportunity for Beatrice. These gentlemen are already here, and they're working. It's different if we said, look, there's no lab, there are no phys, chemists here, nobody lives here, and we're asking for money. This thing is operation, it's an operation, it's going, it's under... and we're asking for money. This thing is operation. It's an operation. It's going. It's underway. They have invested millions of dollars to this point, to get it to this point. So, if people are willing to put up that money, that amount of money to make this thing go through, and these are private investors, there must be something there. There has to be something there. We feel confident that there, that there is. The risk of doing nothing is much larger than the risk of the 326,000 dollars. And again, I'm not saying it's a small amount of money, because it's not. It's a large amount of money. But the, the reward for that investment could be potentially huge for this area and for Gage County. Just the spinoff businesses alone that could come from this are, are enormous. So, I feel very confident in this. Is there a risk? Absolutely. Is it a guarantee it's going to succeed? No one can guarantee that. I can't guarantee the sun's going to come up tomorrow. But I think, I really look for your support on this. We'd like to see you approve this. We're going to do our best to make sure, whatever we can do to help us succeed, trust me, we're going to do that. That's my spiel, that's all I have. Unless you have some questions.
Any questions to Pat? Anybody? Yes, sir.
I think we've heard now from two different groups that are appointed by the city here. They're telling us to go forward as they recommend it, no guaranteeing, of course. And I think we all realize too, when you get to this point, that there's not going to be a bank or another willing volunteer at this moment to step in and do this. It's why it's a riskier calculation. It's why we're taking, something we've been looking forward here. Something that's not necessarily straight manufacturing of lawn mowers. We have some advanced degree people here already working. They're, they're living here. They're buying houses here already. I've talked to the three gentlemen out there the other day, and two of them own houses. One of them's renting with, considering buying. But they're part of the community now.
Phil first.
I'm leaning towards this for the fact is, they're asking for 326,000. They're, they're, I know one of the chemist's family has put in tons of money to this guys. If it wasn't a viable option, I don't think a family would be giving their sons the kind of money they have put into this already. So, it has to have some kind of backing, because it'd be sure hard to come back to mom and dad and say, sorry, I've lost hundreds of thousands of your dollars, you know. It'd be a little awkward at Christmas. So, I really think this has a good potential, because these guys have something at stake. It's not like some of the other ones we have done in the past where we gave them the money and they walked. They didn't really have a stake in this. These guys have their own money in it. It's a big difference than what we've had in the past.
Thank you, Phil. Ted?
Well, the, the gentleman had the automation machine, the word sorting machine. He had his net worth and his parents' net worth in it as well. He lost it all. So, you're a little bit incorrect there. But my question is, I'm not quite sure who it's for. I don't know whether it's Pat or Andrew or Glennis, but I would have been a lot more comfortable with a little bit of this money upfront, a smaller amount upfront. And they basically have a, so they have 12-year, 12, I'm sorry, 12-month agreement for their rent, with 16 months after that lease agreement that they can go roll over. So, I would have been more comfortable with this at $50,000 upfront first year now. The remainder 50 in April, when you plan to give them the remainder, and the, the rest of this in year two, you know, once they've gotten some footing, because it is such a new technology, and it is such a risk. And, and because of the things that Councilman Kerr brought up, the, you know, the track record would have been a little stronger. You know, you'd have a little more, something to go on with us and said, you know, we failed in the past, but.
Not to interrupt you, but we're just talking about the rent abatement is part of it right now.
Yeah, I know, but we got it all in here.
I understand, but the motion on the floor is regarding a rent abatement.
Well, well, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, because I'd like to make a motion that the rent abatement of 76,800 dollars be reduced to 38,322 dollars. And I'm looking for a second so we can discuss that.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. That, you want to repeat that again, that we reduce the rent to 38?
1,322 dollars. From the 76,800 dollars that it, that's then entered into in the resolution.
Okay. Discussion.
Well, this is where I got that. This is how I got the math. If you look in here, the lease agreement began October 1st. It's now December. I, when I took the tour, I asked Mr. Cruz if he was, if he was current on his rent, and he said, yes, he was. So, from my view, the first three months have been paid for. And since all the money that we've talked about here is for money going forward, and as you went, and I, as I read the minutes of the meeting of the CARC committee, he was asked if any was, Mr. Cruz was asked if any of this money was to pay off for debt, pay down debt, and he said, no. So, he told them there's no debt. His, he has no debt. Told me he was current, so from Mars is where I'm standing. The first three months have already been paid for, so that should be reduced 19,200 dollars to begin with from the 76,800 that's being asked for. So, because that's already been done. But how I, how I arrived at the 38,322 is the building's being rented for 12 dollars per square foot. So, now Tobias was nice enough to look some things up for me, because I simply didn't have time this week. It's been pretty hectic. But that's about four times what the industry standard is here. Most everything in Beatrice, as well as Lincoln and Omaha, are anywhere from 3 to 4 dollars a square foot. Finished retail space goes from 12 to 18 dollars a square foot. And I contacted some people that actually rent buildings for a living. And they explained to me, because I don't rent buildings for a living, so I thought I'd, I'd better check into that. So, and they explained to me, depend, rent depends on how much work has to be done to the site, to develop it for rent, how much the, the renter puts in and the rentee puts in. And as we've all toured the building, you'll notice that about half of it isn't done. It's, it's just stud walls. Their neighbors adjacent to them, right across the wall, are paying 2 dollars a square foot for rent. So, but they're asking us to use public funds to give them 12 dollars a square foot for rent. So, the way I did, the way I did this was, I figured it at 553 square feet of it is actually finished. And if you pay them 12 dollars a square foot for the finished portion, and you pay them 4 dollars a square foot, twice what they're getting on the other side, for the unfinished portion, you get 1,066 dollars. So, you have a total of 4,258 dollars for the remaining nine month, remainder nine months of what the lease would be. That brings the total to 38,322 dollars. So, that's where I'm at.
But on your slide here, project rent, 76,800 for 12 months, 1 dollar per square foot.
Per month.
Per month. Okay, gotcha.
And I believe in the, good, in the request, it, that we would provide these funds as working capital pay their lease for one year. It doesn't really have a time. It doesn't say as of October 1, it's just for a year.
Their lease.
And that's assuming that the.
The lease agreement that I have in my packet was signed, it says October 1st.
But I'm just.
And, and, and we've been, and the request that was made of us is for, for funds for future use. That they, and they told me that, that they have all the funds to date. So, that's where I'm at with it. And I wouldn't have a problem with them that once the remainder of the, the, because it was explained to me, is the remainder of the buildout space is going to be office space and retail space and things like that. And when that's all completed, if they want to come back to us and ask for the remainder of it to be brought back up to the 12 dollars a square foot, which is four times what we're, what they had, would have to pay anywhere else in Beatrice, I, I would, I would support that then, if it, if this passes. So, that's where I'm at with it.
Ted, I have a comment for you on this.
Yeah.
As we were working through this process with Alan Cruz and Rare Earth Salts, this began back in July-ish, collecting information, working through the numbers, looking at what they were looking to do. They had come to us and asked about this lease abatement, okay? And we said to them, do you have a lease? At that point in time, they didn't have a lease put together. We said, you're going to need a lease put together. Now, keep in mind, we're continuing to work through this process.
Mm-hmm.
We have a monthly meeting, okay? So, you know, as we're collecting information, if we miss that monthly meeting, now you have to wait till next month.
Right.
So, they provided this lease to us, in essence, to go with the request that you guys are looking at tonight. I don't feel that he should be punished because of the date that he put on this or the date that they struck because of the fact that we were not quick enough to get the request to you in a timelier fashion. You know, perhaps it's our fault for taking more time, doing more due diligence
Well.
to bring it to your committee. And I understand what you're saying. It, it's dated in October. Yeah, you're exactly right. But we took some extra time to make sure that we worked through the numbers, that we went through his business plan. We asked them to come back to our meeting, or we held another meeting to go through some additional information. So, I, I fully understand what you're saying, and yes, you're correct, that there is part of the space that's not finished yet. And it, I was out there today. I, I saw it just as much as you did. But it's my understanding that that's going to be coming very soon. I mean, the drywall's there. It's not like they're not going to be doing it. So.
I get that. But the original lease that I have, that, that I got was given in September. And then I have one that was given in November, and a different lease agreement with the same company, and now it's December. And so, and the pack, and the one I have in my packet is different than these two. So, it's been revised at least three times.
To coincide with request, sure.
It's not just, it's not just a matter of dates being changed. There's, some of the lease has been changed. So, and I'm, I'm not trying to punish anybody. I'm trying to, I'm trying to pay, I'm trying to use public funds in, in a manner that that if I was, if I was negotiating this, that I would expect it to be negotiated in the same way. And I still, it, it's, I think you could have got a better deal someplace else. And if, and if I would have been your board, and hindsight's 20-20, but if I'd have been your board back in June or July when they came to me and said, you know, we're looking at this, and it's going to be 12 dollars a square foot, I would have said, you know, we can look on our website, and we can pull up half a dozen, we can pull up at least four different buildings in Gage County that you can get for 3 dollars a square foot. And, and so, you're asking me to vote and trust you with public funds when I can look at this and say, in at least one instance, you didn't do your due diligence when it comes to it.
Okay, Ted. Anybody else have any questions?
That's where I'm at.
Over here.
Isn't, isn't the total buildout going to be done in January, wasn't it?
In January.
About January.
I'm going to make, I'd like to make a comment.
Then come up. Then come up and introduce yourself.
I'll take care of it, Ted. If you'd state your name, please.
My name is Alan Cruz. I am the Chief Executive Officer for Rare Earth Salts. To answer your question, the due diligence on calling around for square footage for space across Gage County was done. There was one space only within Gage County that was willing to do the work that needed to be done to transform their space, to handle the air handling and other requirements that are needed for an actual wet-dry lab. That one and only space is the space that we currently occupy today. There are certainly plenty of other spaces that are warehousing spaces, for sure. And that is the 3 to 4 dollars a square foot that you reference. As you were out and had toured our space on Saturday, I had also informed you that wet-dry lab space is, you cannot compare that space to a retail space, as you cannot compare a retail space to a warehouse space because of the use function of the space and what goes on within that activity. If I were to go to Nebraska Innovation Campus and build the same 6,600 square feet there, regardless of the fact that 50% or 20% or 10% is, is office space versus the other corresponding number and breakdown in wet-dry lab space, I would still be charged across the square footage at the wet-dry lab rate, which would be in excess of 20 to 25 dollars per square foot because of the use demand that is put on the building and the extra requirements that is put on it. So, we had a desire to be here in Gage County. This is our home. We have brought additional people with us so they can make it their home. And so far, they have done that, and we look to create additional jobs. But in regards to the, the request for the term, the initial term of the lease agreement is October 1st. The request that I had made to Engage, and then therefore through them to the CARC and to the city council, is for 12 months of rent abatement. Not for the first 12 months of the lease term, but 12 months from the period of time that you either grant or do, or deny the request. So, whether I am up to date, which I am, and whether it's in December or January, when it's finished, that is when the 12-month rent abatement, as I'm asking for in this request through Engage, would start. So, I'm not asking you to pay in arrears the October, November, and December. I'm asking you to, if so, if the city council should show support this resolution, is to move and pay for 12 months of rent. If the city council would like for that to wait until the space is completely built out, I am more than willing to accept that. As Councilman Fairbanks brings up the fact that there is a good portion of the building that is not currently built up. At the same time, I will inform the city council as a whole that as you can see, all that is really left is throwing up some sheet rock, some mud, some paint, some carpet. The space will be done and built out sometime in the first week of January. So, that's really all I wanted to make a comment on in regards to the lease space.
Any questions to Mr. Cruz?
Thank you for your consideration.
Alan. Any other comments regarding the motion that we have on the floor for reducing the rent to 38,322? And I'd ask for your vote, please. And that motion fails by a vote of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 to 2 with 1 abstention.
You got Kerr and Fairbanks voting in favor of it?
Kerr and Fairbanks voting in favor of it. Right. Thank you. All right, let's go back to the original motion for the rent abatement. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second regarding Resolution Number 5713. Any other comments? Mr. Butcher?
If we've ceased comments or discussion on this matter, we're going to vote on the final resolution as it's drafted. We did note, I don't know if we've changed this, Tobias?
Yes.
Did we change that?
We changed that number.
All right. So. There's just a slight, we had a number inverse in the monthly payment. Noted on page 37 of your packet. It was listed there as 4,600 dollars. It's 6,400 dollars in monthly payments. So, just wanted to make sure that was taken care of.
Any other comments from the council, anybody from the audience? Back to the council. I ask for your vote, please. And that motion, 1 abstention. We have Kerr and Fairbanks voting against. And we have 5 in favor. So, 7 to 2 with 1 abstention.
5 to 2.
And 1 abstention, right?
Yes, 5 to 2.
Right. And that Resolution Number 5713 has been passed and adopted. Next, Resolution 5714, executing an agreement and related documents with Engage for forgivable loans totaling 250,000 dollars derived from LB-840 to implement and administer an economic development project to benefit Rare Earth Salts Separations and Refining LLC.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5714 be passed and adopted.
Seconded. Seconded by Claybaugh. Moved by Patton and seconded by Claybaugh that the Resolution 7414 be passed and adopted. Discussion. Stan? Yes, sir.
I think we've pretty well beat the horse pretty dead in that last one. And I just want to assure you that I was not in any way trying to say that you folks didn't do your due diligence, because you did. And this is going to pass, and I hope you guys do gangbusters out there. I really do. I'm just not comfortable with it. That's why my note. That's why my no vote went. But I certainly do hope if this goes through, man, I hope you got 300, 500 jobs out there that we'll be building more buildings. But it's just, I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay. Mr. Kerr, thank you. Mr. Fairbanks?
I already said more tonight than I intended to. I just would like to rest the body to know that I labored over this a long time, and I asked as many questions as I possibly could, and I looked at it at every possible angle that I possibly could, and my vote will reflect that.
Okay. Mr. Doyle?
I've sat on this committee and the prior committees since they were started, all right? And I just don't want to leave this subject without, I wish I had a piece of, if I would have had my file with me, I could have talked to you, but there has been all kinds of successes that you guys have had with this CDBG revolving loan fund. I mean, Keys Manufacturing isn't here now, but we kept them afloat for a really long time and kept a lot of employees there, precise manufacturer. I can't even tell you the number of things that were successful with that initial couple of million dollars that you put in, and how much that has actually revolved in this community to say nothing about in the APCO. And it just happened to be me and the mayor doing that, so I can talk from expertise with that. And we gave them a lot of stuff, but believe me, it was very, very scary what we gave them at the time. So I just want to pass on that you really need to look at these things individually. There's no guarantee with any of these that we wouldn't, they wouldn't be coming to us and we wouldn't be coming to you. But please don't walk out with the thought that, at least in my perspective, and I'm a taxpayer just like all the rest of you guys, I think I pay enough tax in this town, that those monies that you initial, that this city put into that initial revolving loan fund has been a very good thing for our community. Okay? That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Terry. Any other comments from the council? What about from the audience? All right, I'll ask for your vote, please. And that vote is five to two with Kerr and Fairbanks voting against and one abstention, and that's Bob Morgan. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work, guys.
Thank you.
Next, I'll introduce an ordinance establishing electric utility rates.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 14-033. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Or second?
Second.
Seconded by Kerr. Discussion.
Yeah.
On our motion to suspend the rules, there's no debate. No discussion. We just call for the vote.
Your vote, please. And that, and that vote...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That vote passes eight-zero. Can we to the public forum? We're not there yet.
You guys got to quit throwing him curveballs.
All right. Ordinance Number 14-033 by number only the first time. Ordinance Number 14-033 the second time, and Ordinance Number 14-033 the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that Ordinance Number 14-033 be passed and approved.
Seconded.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook. That Ordinance Number 14-033, you want, somebody want to open that door for us, please? Ordinance Number 14-033 be passed and approved. Discussion.
If you don't mind, I'll start off. This is as we discussed during budget season. What we have before you tonight is an electric rate ordinance that proposes a 1% increase in the electric rates for the city of Beatrice. We did retain a consultant, J.K. Energy Consulting, to help do a rate study for us. They reviewed our current rates. They looked at what MPBD has done over the last couple of years. When MPBD does have a rate increase, it's not always equal across the board. They've been raising their winter rates up more, so they've been raising their summer rates up, and so we need to adjust our rates a little bit to match that. And so our proposed rate ordinance tonight has a larger increase on the winter side than it does on the summer side, but in essence, all it does is pass along the transmission rate increase that we received from MPBD starting January 1st.
What from the audience? Any questions? Seeing none, your vote, please. And that is approved, eight-zero. Ordinance Number 14-033 has been approved. Next item on the agenda is a public forum. Public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum?
So is Terry.
Okay. Next item is the city administrator's report.
Again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, we'll just cut a couple of highlights. Those being that MPBD, we're still working with them on a wholesale contract. I go out there again on Wednesday for a meeting. And additionally to that, Pat Fies and I have met with several other wholesale providers to explore other options. 407 Court Street, building downtown, we are currently talking to some structural engineers. We're going to look to get one of them on, on staff so we can use their expertise to help us in the demolition and what we can do with that building downtown. So we are currently looking for structural engineers.
Just one question, Tobias. We, we've already voted to put in the new electrical. I've had a few people ask me, "When, when will that get started?"
Right now, I would anticipate that they're probably not looking to actually install any of the infrastructure until at least January, February, the earliest.
Okay, okay. They, I just had some ask me, and I didn't have an answer for them.
Tobias?
Yes.
The 407 Court, had, I guess, in this, and obviously, maybe it's a stretch in trying to save a little money, did we contact the university? I mean, is there any of their engineering students that would like to take that on as a project or even the guys with their advanced degree projects? Nope.
We haven't...
Shaking his head, no.
You're, you're going to want the stamp is what you're going to want.
Well, I know you need your, I know you need that, the official stamp at the end of it with a, with the structural engineer, but I, I'm just thinking, to do the legwork part of it, is there a chance that, you know, could have had?
We're having a difficult time finding many structural engineers that were willing to look at that, tearing down a building that's that close to two other buildings. The market's been fairly small.
Well, I, okay. I've got a...
I can explain the reason why. Liability.
Well, I get that.
Extreme amount of liability. I don't, first of all, I don't know if we would be comfortable with the liability of having a student take part in that unless they were under the guise of someone that was a professional, I mean, complete professional. The second one being is, I don't know if the university or anyone else would want to take on any...
Right.
Potential liability with that, having a student.
Just trying to look outside the box a little bit. If you run, if you really run into a snag and you can't find anybody, if you contact, I got a guy that I grew up with that does that for the Army Corps of Engineers in Omaha. I know he wouldn't do that, but maybe he would know someone that would.
Okay.
So...
I'm assuming that owner has not stepped up to the responsibility then?
Yeah.
Were we worried about hiring somebody? Were we worried about liability?
No, it's, we'll kind of run the ship and see where it takes us.
Yep.
If, if we were at this point, due to the emergency nature of it, the fact that it is in the state that it's in, and moving forward with some of the things that have been identified by our building inspectors and our engineers, if we were to put it upon the building or the owner, the timelines they're given to pull a demo permit, the six months and everything else, the timetables may be far too long that we wouldn't be willing to take on the risk of that. And so that's why we're also moving so quickly.
Okay. Any other questions?
Other highlights I just pointed out to you, if you noticed in the paper the other day, we had Nebraska Supreme Court come back and rule in our favor regarding to do some junk motor vehicles. That case actually started about three and a half years ago. Yes. And I actually tried the case, and then Mr. Butcher handled all the appeals on it, so it's taken a little while, but we finally got it to completion. You'll note that the police department has hired two new officers that are starting here shortly. One will praise Rob Moreau, who, or Merau, who went to the code enforcement officer. The other one, Officer Reese, will be retiring at the end of the year and will replace him. So you'll see two new faces in that department. And then finally, you may have noticed or heard that with the Burlington Northern Line, rail line on the northwest part of town, they came in, decided to upgrade their line. They had the river, Big Blue River, starting to eat out part of the bank. It was encroaching upon their line, their, their rail line. Our guys had to go out and move some utilities, namely the water department had to go out and move a transmission line, and the electric department had to go out and move one of their lines, and neither one of those were budgeted items, but the guys have done a great job, stepped up and got those projects done in less than two weeks of time, and those are completed now, but they were unbudgeted items, so we'll have to find some other cost-saving measures as we move forward. Other than that, any questions?
Okay, thanks, Tobias. Just a couple of announcements before we go into executive session. Our next regular scheduled meeting is January 5th at 7:00 in this, in this room. And also, I'm inclined to cancel the December 22nd work session. We've got a couple of items on there. Anybody have any heartburn over that? So we won't have a work session on December 22nd. And with that, we'll go into executive session.
Mayor, I move that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 8:21 PM. For the protection of public interest, discuss union negotiations.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
And seconded by Morgan. That we, we have to certainly counsel go into executive session at 8:20?
8:21.
8:21 for the protection of the public interest to discuss union negotiations.
Call for the vote?
Add your vote, please.